We are live.
Good evening, welcome folks who are with us this evening. This is the Exeter Township School District's June workshop meeting. This is the meeting that we hold each month in advance of our board voting meeting, which will be next Tuesday. Purpose of our board workshop meeting is to give our board members a chance to thoroughly review all the items on the agenda. So we'll be reviewing the agenda this evening. And ask any questions, get as much detail as necessary. And when possible, make available administrators who can help us understand some of the content that we'll be we'll be addressing next Tuesday. So this evening, the first item on the agenda is public comments. And it's an opportunity for folks who are listening in to to comment on any aspect of the agenda or any other operations relative to the school district. And our IT folks, Joe Calamita, Joe Way, both will help us with this. And I'll ask them at this time, fellows, do we have any? Do we have any, any comments from the public at this point?
We do. We had several. So if you would like, I can get started. Our first comment comes from Janet Greeden. Says, hello, I wanted to make a public comment of thanks. Thank you to our extraordinary teachers for going above and beyond to allow our students to learn. My children attend the junior high school and senior high school. Their teachers made every effort to remain connected to their students. I applaud every single teacher in our district. Thank you to the three women who began the Adopt a Senior program and those parents who adopted close to 400 Exeter seniors. The program was an enormous success and provided an uplifting experience for everyone involved. Thank you to Mr. Campbell and the Exeter teaching staff for supporting the Adopt a Senior program, the senior parade, and the wonderful virtual graduation ceremony. Although the seniors were disappointed that they were unable to share graduation in a face-to-face ceremony, the ceremony was very personalized and such a joy to view. I've never been prouder of our Exeter teachers and students. They all should be given a big round of applause. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Greeden.
Our second question comes from Richard Stanley from 4911 Dunham Drive. Commendable efforts by Thomas Legath, our athletic director, in piecing together a foundation for reentry plan for the district's interscholastic athletics in light of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Joe?
However, yes, sure.
There's not going to be any context for these questions, and I'm wondering if we can hold on them till we get to that item on the agenda where we talk about the plan.
We, that would be fine.
I'll throw that out to you, Dave. These questions are specific to the plan. And I think it might be appropriate to have a overview of the plan before we get into the specific questions. Otherwise, we're either that or we can do that plan now and get it out of the way. I just feel like the questions are related to the draft of the plan that the rest of the people watching would, may not be aware of. That's all I'm saying.
Well, Joe, are there any other questions that aren't related to the athletic plan?
Yes, there's one remaining. Okay. It's from Casey Juck, who is a guidance secretary at Reifton. She wants to ask what's the reason that her position is being eliminated? Did you receive a list of everything that I do for Reifton admin and the school district on before you made your decision? Was there even an option of cutting hours for the other guidance secretaries in the district to save money instead of eliminating mine? My job as guidance secretary at Reifton does many of the same things as the guidance secretaries at the junior and senior high school, but I do them part-time instead of full-time and without benefits. The two guidance counselors at Reifton are already overwhelmed with the amount of students they need to see on a daily basis. To have to ask, to have to also take on my responsibilities should be, would be extremely difficult. Also, enrollment at admin is apparently overwhelmed. I don't know how she would also do all of the enrollments and withdrawals for Reifton. While Reifton is considered an elementary school, it's not. We have around 625 students. Our scheduling structure is completely different than the elementary school. We also have Eagle Block, which I play a part in handling. On the last voting meeting, one of the board members brought her child in to get a vote changed for reading aids. I do, I'm sorry, I do believe each should not get their hours cut. But how is it right that because she needs, she sees a need because of her child, she can get the board to take a second look at the reading aids hours? I have a student who's, I have students who depend on seeing me in school, and I have my own child who depends on me having a job.
So, you know, the, the recommendations for making modifications in staffing came from our, initially from our administrative team. So I think they, they probably have the best understanding in terms of, of the rationale for why the recommendations were made. So I'd like to turn that over to Dr. Winters or Dr. Phillips for any comments in regard to that, you know, that particular comment.
Well, what I can say is the same with the recommendations for the aid positions. It was discussed at a administrative meeting. The principals had input. The discussion was the fact that there are no secretaries at the elementary level. That was one of the factors in the decision that was made. I don't know if Ann or Patrick want to add anything more.
The only thing I'll add is that there are two guidance counselors at Reifton Elementary, and there's only one at a Wotton as well as the other, but a Wotton's enrollment is similar to, to Reifton. So that in addition to what Dr. Phillips said, is how the administrative team came up with a recommended cut.
And, you know, obviously, it was the board's, ultimately, the, the board's interest in, in looking at any areas where we might be able to reduce costs, you know, for the school districts. And unfortunately, some of the, some of those involved, you know, members of our staff who who have, you know, been very committed to their roles. And we appreciate the work that they've done. And my understanding is that we'll, we'll find a way to cover, you know, those specific responsibilities in some other manner. Mr. Way, any other questions at this time or comments? I'll take that as a, I'll take that as a no.
Sorry, no, there are no more comments, other than the athletic one, which we can address later after Mr. Legath's presentation.
Okay, so we'll bring that one back up as per Mr. Japena's recommendation. We're going to move then into our, before we move on. Mr. Way, could you, could you just remind us, remind folks who might be listening in how they might be able to submit a question? I'd like to kind of revisit questions or comments at the very end of the agenda, if there are any that come in over the course of the meeting today.
Sure. If you have questions, please submit them via email to questions@myexeter.org.
Great. And then we'll take some time at the very end of the meeting to, to revisit the public comments. So at this time, we're going to move into our agenda, but I'd like to do one thing. We've got Mr. Phil Leinbach with us this evening. Phil is the president of AEM Architects. And what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Fidler to introduce Mr. Leinbach, and we'll go to item 12A on our agenda and discuss an addendum to a contract. Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Dave. And I will be brief. We, we would like to move ahead with the preliminary plans for the transportation center. And in order to do that, we needed to update the existing contract, which is kind of hard to believe, but it's dated 2014. And so Phil Leinbach, the president of AEM Architects, did just that. That was sent around to the board. And I'm sure it'll be up on the screen shortly. We can't do anything until we do that. And so we thought we'd have Mr. Leinbach at the meeting tonight to go over the terms of the addendum and to talk a little bit about what, if the board approves the addendum, what kind of work he would do in a preliminary fashion to, to get the project rolling. So with that, Phil, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. And thank you, board, for the opportunity to provide some explanation and certainly then answer any questions that you have regarding the addendum. As was noted already, the original contract or agreement that's in place is dated from September of 2014. And we believe that AEM, the most prudent way to handle this was a simple addendum, keep all the terms of the contract that was gone over and put in place in 2014. Leave those alone if they didn't need to change, not reinvent the wheel. So simply, the letter that you have in front of you amends those things that either are time-sensitive or scope-sensitive with regard to what the project was anticipated to be back in 2014. So section 1.1 there in the letter, simply just looking at a building description, this does not lock you into anything. It's a starting point. And just give some parameters as to what the building size may be. And then we had agreed to look up the three options. The reality is where the project kind of terminated the last time we were, had a concept developed that was presented to the township from initial conversations with the administration. It seems like most components of that are needs. And so it's an assessment of where we left off and taking a look at how to address that to decrease scope, look at a phased project, what have you. Come back to the board with some options that are reviewed with administration facilities and transportation of what is best suited for moving forward. Along with that, we would certainly be providing cost impacts of those options. And there might be an option 1A and 1B, a 2A and 2B. So if it necessitates that, we're not taking a hard, fast line on, we will only do three options if there are some variations on a theme. June 2015 was a date in section 1.2. That was the start of construction. I realize you don't have the benefit of having the contract in front of you. So we just have that as to be determined. February 2016, that was a substantial completion date of the previous project. That also is to be determined. And that's really going to be driven by the variance process which I'll touch on in just a moment. Item 2.5.4 in the contract was our commercial liability or rather professional liability. We since have had that increased. So simply more protections out there to be in line with where the industry is moving. So where we had a $1,000 limit, our policy is now a $2,000 limit. And I don't know if we've given you our certificate of insurance. We certainly will upon execution of, of the addendum. 4.3.4 is relative to, let me page there. Services covered by the agreement had indicated complete within 36 months of the date of this agreement. And so we're changing that as per the addendum. 11.1 is an 11.7 or the, the largest change, and that has to do with the fee structure. The last time was a single fixed fee. And what we typically find is the fixed fee kind of puts us in a box and sometimes doesn't make for easy latitude to move and be nimble with the design, whereas this proposes a fee based on the cost of construction, of 6% of the cost of construction plus the cost of civil engineering services that are passed through. And the civil engineer Stackhouse Bensinger, the 6% includes all structural, architectural, mechanical, electrical plumbing design. We are teaming again with SDE, Systems Design Engineering, for that component of the project. And it also then recognizes almost $32,000 that was expended previously. We are crediting that against that 6% of the cost of the work. So that work that had been completed previously, you're not paying for twice because we really have a pretty well-defined starting point of where we need to pick up and adjust things from. There is a note about hourly fees estimated between $5,500 and $7,700 for Stackhouse. And that is for their support in the zoning variance process, and that would be billed hourly. We, AEM, and SDE, SD, limited if, if little work with regard to the variance. We will support that variance process at no cost to the district. What we will need to do is, as I had mentioned previously, there's really three aspects to the project moving forward. If things go successfully, step one would be to meet with administration, transportation, transportation facilities, and assess what changes to the original design are necessary. Look at those options. Come to an understanding with administration and ultimately the board of what will be presented to the township to apply for a variance for the use of the site out at the Wotton Creek Elementary site. Stackhouse has the heavier lift than that, and that's why there's an additional service for them. So that's kind of step one. Step two is the actual variance process, which I would say at minimum is probably going to take three months. Once that starts, there's typically a 30-day notification period. Once we file for the variance, then there's the meeting, and then there's a 30-day comment period that could be held open and up to 60 days. So there's some issues there as far as just the timing of the process. If that is favorable, then part three would, with the board's authorization, we would pick up and move forward with the full design. And that's where we would really get into documenting the project, put it out for bidding via the public realm. 11.7 simply is the update of where our hourly rates are at this point in time to bring those current with 2020. And they would be fixed for the life of the contract. They do not update in 2021 where we sign the contract. They remain at that level for the entire project. I've gone through that kind of quickly, and I know there's, you know, we've got a nearly 20-page contract that goes along with this. But they are the components that would change to allow us to keep moving forward. I will answer any questions the board or administration may have.
Any questions?
Phil, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, I'm not seeing the green box around, around my speaker box, so I was confused. Could you just address real quick with the variance process, if we were to go down the variance process? There is no time restriction on when we would be able to use that variance, as long as we remain owners of the property. Is that accurate? Or could there be some differences in there?
I'm sure there's probably some legal specificity that somebody can say, and given these situations, but generally speaking, once that variance, thinking positively is granted, that is a condition of that project unless that would get terminated. But certainly, it doesn't necessitate that you instantly have to start some things moving like a land development plan that gets approved by DEP or even locally for a grading permit. They often will have a life that after a time goes by, a year, three years, you would have to keep renewing that plan. That's not the typical condition with a variance unless there's some type of a condition put on by the variance board.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Certainly.
Phil, what's the, once, let's just assume that at some point, the, the variance is awarded. The school district is given the, the green light to move forward. What does AEM's involvement be, become post-variance? What, what's the role? You know, let's say from onset of the project to completion.
This is set up as a traditional design bid-build agreement, meaning we would develop the design to the level that is necessitated for public bidding in Pennsylvania. The minimum for contracts, general construction, plumbing, HVAC and electrical. So we would make those delineations in the multiple prime contract. We would oversee the bidding process then for you, receive the bids, review the bids with you, review those with your solicitor for accuracy, assuming that the project is then awarded, work on getting the contracts executed with the contractors. And then do the construction administration services, which are typical weekly site visits. I can tell you, being this close, it's much easier to drive to the site and look at the things hands-on to get things resolved. So we'll probably be over there no less than weekly, probably multiple times, depending on what the level of work is. And we would stay through that process through the closeout punch list and final occupancy being in hand, closing out of the contracts and filing the final pay applications for contractors. So it is a full architectural service turnkey approach where we are assisting and working with the district through the entire process.
Are there any other, are there any other entities that the district would have to contract with in, in terms of the execution of this project or you know, obviously, you know, beyond the, the actual contractors that are, that are hired to do the work? Will there be any other entities that would be, that would be at play?
At, at the district's discretion, depending how you wish to do your construction oversight. Sometimes you will use in-house personnel to function as your clerk of the works and basically be there onsite every day, be a liaison to administration and the board as well as to AEM. So that you're confident we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and not sitting on our hands and letting the project, you know, go south on you. Or there are various types of construction management that sometimes individuals will bring on. I don't believe test borings were done on the site. I'd have to look back in the file. If they were, we will use those. But I would certainly recommend that test borings would be done. And I think we have some of those additional services potentially, if required and approved by the administration, the board to be done. But we would certainly want to do a subsurface investigation. So that would be an outside consultant that would do that. We would certainly assist you in getting those bids. No additional cost for us. But we would get proposals for you to get geotechnical services done. Commissioning is now a requirement of the building code that can be provided by the contractors. My opinion is kind of is, at times, the fox watching the hen house. You don't know who your contractors are. And I think the commissioning being done directly for the school district is beneficial to you. That may be something you would want to look into, have a commissioning consultant. And there's electrical and mechanical components that have to be commissioned under the new building code. They're vague as to what that is, so we can work with you so that you're not paying for some astronomical fee that it's sensible based on the scope of work. They would be the typical ones. Interior design and those types of things, this is a pretty straightforward building. We would assist you as part of our normal fee, no additional expense for basic color selection, as long as we're not, you know, creating 50 color scenarios or something ridiculous, but basic interior colors, selections, finishes, materials, that's part of our service. So there should not be anything additional there. They would be the ones that come to mind that are fairly typical on these types of projects. The ones that I had mentioned, the commissioning, a geotechnical service, and then the construction management or clerk of the works, depending how you choose to handle that. And that's sometimes is something as we work through the design. If we hit a connection with the facilities folks, and we come to an understanding, sometimes that can be handled effectively in how some districts that works well for others choose to have somebody independent, and that is fine. We'll work with you, whatever the district feels is best for you.
Thank you. And, and this is all, you know, contingent upon the success of being able to, to get a variance approved for the project, and that's by no means guaranteed.
Absolutely not. The, the heaviest financial lift of our agreement is post-variance. That is certainly when the bulk of our work is going to be done.
Phil, are there any other public bodies, governmental bodies that you or we would be working with besides the township on this project?
The township, there, there are several things even with the township. Of course, we have the land development, which takes us through the, the land planning, planning commission and variance. That's land development. That will also get pushed out to the Berks County Conservation District. They will be doing the review in all likelihood unless they, they push it up the ladder to DEP. They're the local arm of DEP for looking at compliance with DEP guidelines. This would be an NPDS permit, which is a disturbance of more than one acre. So DEP is going to have their fingers in the project through the Conservation District in all likelihood. County planning will look at it in an advisory manner and basically just say, hey, this is in line with the county vision for land planning or make any things, list any suggestions, but that is typically just their recommendations. They are not binding. Beyond that, of course, then we have the building permit piece, which is through Exeter Township. And that's an independent third party that does that. So they would be the primary regulatory entities that we would be dealing with, as long as we don't get into any special studies or anything like that, which I don't recall them coming up for that site other than our variance use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Leinbach? Well, Phil, thank you for joining us this evening. And again, this item will be on our board agenda for a vote next Tuesday. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much. And if something does come up in the meantime, and certainly can shoot me an email, and I will try to get an answer back to you as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Great. Thanks, Phil.
Good night.
Good night. So we're going to move back into our agenda, back to the beginning. And we're at item three. And we'll be hearing from Mr. Legath, our athletic director, on the athletic report. So I'll turn it over to Tom Legath at this time. Tom?
You're muted, Tom.
Good evening. This is Mr. Legath, your athletic director. This will be a pre-recorded presentation. I will be available afterwards for any questions. Welcome to my board report for the 2019-2020 school year. We'll be covering three categories tonight, the first being participation.
Good evening. This is Mr. Legath, your athletic director. This will be a pre-recorded presentation. I will be available afterwards for any questions. Welcome to my board report for the 2019-2020 school year. We'll be covering three categories tonight, the first being participation. What you see here are participants at the junior high and the senior high for multi-sports. You also see a date range of three years from starting 17, 18, 18, 19, and 19, 20. And to summarize this, numbers are, for the most part, in participation, the same with multi-sport athletes, two sports and three-sport athletes. You then go to the high school, which is the fall participation, again, in a three-year synopsis. And you see that for the most part, participation is the same, if not a little bit of an increase. The next slide is the winter, where you see an increase as well in participation numbers. And also for the start of the spring, which we didn't obviously have to a full season, but we did start our season, had about two weeks of where we had tryouts and we had teams practicing for approximately 10 days. The next three slides are the junior high's participation fall, which again, The next three slides are the junior high's participation fall, which again, you can see the grayish bars at the at the back are are this current year and there is an increase in participation. You have our winter junior high participation. And then we took our spring participation where obviously we did not have our our junior high spring season as well, but and they did not start practice, but they did have physicals that needed to be earned in and we took those numbers of the physicals that need to be handed in to complete our our graph. The next category here is the participation from our co-ops. So we have the we have Antietam in orange and we have Y missing in blue. And Y missing was newly started this year with our swimming program. And you can see we had about 12 individuals from Y missing that came over for swimming. Our Antietam co-op works very well. The communication with the Antietam Athletic Department in their school district has has been great and over the last three years, you can see the numbers of participation. Now, this is at the high school level. At the junior high level, you we have just Antietam in a co-op. And participation for them as well is just increasing over the years. So great to see and it's great to work with them every year. The next category tonight, the second major category we have here is sports medicine. And you can see again, we have a kind of a three-year out plan here. We have this. This one is the injuries and what primarily are the injuries. We have a lot of contusions, strains, concussions that we pretty much have, as you can see here, every year. There's a lot of other injuries at the category in this that is just, you know, multiple different things that an injury that could occur. And I had our athletic trainer Audrey put this together. Then we have our treatments and, you know, we have from aping ankles is a is a major treatment that we have to giving evaluations. And you can see there all the different things that that come up whirlpool for the kids after foam rolling, which is a big one. And then again, the majority of it is other because there's just so many different things that occur that we chart. The third category that we have tonight is wins losses, which we've done over the years and we'll start first with the senior high for fall. And again, a three-year range here from 2017 all the way to this current year, which was the fall of 2019 and wins and losses, you know, it varies every year, but basically it's the same with our with our win-loss success. We were fortunate enough for the fourth straight year to have our girls volleyball team win the Berks County Championship. And you can kind of see there on the far right of each year, our girls volleyball team has not lost a league match in three years. The next is the winter. And again, we were fortunate with our cheerleading team and win their six consecutive Berks County Championship. We also made it to the county final in wrestling and lost in a heartbreaker to Hamburg in a in a tiebreaker formula at the end, but we had again, another successful year with our winter sports. And then in our spring sports, and again, I just went back to 2016 since we didn't have our season and showed you a three-year synopsis there of 2016 through 2019 with not again, having our spring season this year. Overall, what you just saw the last couple of slides were our league wins and losses. And and now these are our overall wins and losses. And again, this this current year is in green. So you can see where we're at there with now the winter. And then the spring back dating for three years. The last one here is makes me makes me smile. This is this is really cool to see and over the last three years, you can see there in the middle where our numbers have gone up to where we kind of just were unbelievable with 43 of our senior athletes signing to go on to college to participate in athletics. And we were recently publicized, honored in the Red Eagle last Sunday with a article on the front page that was just awesome. And and the amount of people that that reached out just to say, wow, I think, you know, 12% of our senior class, you know, signed here and it's just, it's it was really, it's really awesome to see. I can remember back 10 years ago when I first heard it at Exeter and I we had one signee. And to fast forward here in the last three years, 22, 24, and then this year with 43, it's just, it's a pleasure to see. Obviously, first, the hard work of all of these student athletes and their families and and also their coaches that have guided them along the way. It's just, it's it's just a wonderful tribute to see here. This last slide with all these different college logos and where our kids are going to participate in athletics. So I'm available for any questions. I again, want to thank the school board and the administration for all of their support. They've been wonderful with with everything. Times have changed, even even currently, as we know, to coming up with different strategies and things. And I just, I really want to just thank the school board and the administration for all of their support. Thank you.
Nice job, Tom. Any comments or any questions for for Mr. Mr. Legath?
I just want to thank Mr. Legath for his leadership and also in addition to running the sports program, he also has to manage all the activities of booster clubs. He's on the campus campuses, morning, noon and night. And has tremendous relationships throughout the school district. And I think he does a fantastic job for us. And Tom, I don't know if at some point you can attach a dollar figure. I know all those aren't scholarships per se, but it'd be interesting to know the dollar finger figure associated with all those people going to going off to school to continue their athletic careers. And and I'd also be interested in knowing what their academic standing is relative to their academic performance as well. I mean, their athletic performance.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. And I can I can definitely send that to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Legath, I have a quick question. In regards to the co-op program, I'm assuming that means those are kids from other schools that participate in sports with our Exeter team. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Do they pay an activity fee at all?
They they do not. There is a formula that was created about 12, 13 years ago with our business office and the school district that we work with that our business office will bill the co-op being school district fee. And Mrs. Guidish, if you would like to extend on that, please do.
Yes, I can. The we calculate the direct cost for the individual sport and come up with a cost per athlete. And the co-op school will be billed for that. In addition to, we calculate an overhead for administration, athletic trainer. And we add on an indirect portion. They're billed for that as well. So indirect and direct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And could you just comment quick? Would you say that that is a closer reflection of the total cost that it that it would be for a per student cost participating than we charge students directly for the activity fee?
Yes, it's indicative of the true of the cost of that particular sport. And the cost per student, per sport varies.
Tom, I've got a question. Do you track our students who go to these schools? I noticed, for example, I think it was two years ago, there were what 22 or 24 students? Do you track how many of them stay with the program? And along with Mike's question, are they, you know, are they keeping their grades up so that they can continue to participate? I I've read stories online and in print products that say that some percentage of students have a signing day, they go off to a certain school. But then in sophomore year, they're they don't, they decide they don't want to do it anymore. So is there any way to develop that to see how many of our kids stay with and actually graduate? If they went for wrestling, they graduate a wrestler. If they went for volleyball, they graduate a volleyball player.
Yes. So I do track them and I would, you know, I don't want to put a percentage on, but I would, I would maybe say, you know, off top, I had 80 to 85% do stay throughout four years. But there's, there's definitely something that that, you know, I can include that for years to come, you know, with that.
That'd be great.
Seeing how they they, you know, finish through and if they're still playing, playing that sport.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, if there are no further questions for Tom, maybe we can go back, Joe Way, to the the public comment or question that was submitted.
I I think the question, I think Tom has another presentation later on about the reentry plan. The questions directly are about the reentry plan. So it may be a more timely discussion then.
Is that, would that be appropriate, Mr. Legath, or would you prefer to? Well, I I can, I can do obviously whatever you want, but I did not know if I was presenting the plan tonight. I can easily present the plan again tonight. And I or I can answer the questions. Yeah, you're not on the agenda then for later to present on the plan. Is that? Yeah. So that so from my understanding, the plan is on the agenda tonight for just the board to talk about. Okay.
Item 10A.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we address that question then when we get to that part of the agenda? Okay, will you be with us? Will you stay with us? Of course, I wouldn't be doing anything else tonight. Sure. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks. And great presentation and the graphics were really, I think, very a great way to really see, you know, the the metrics really help, I think, so many times to kind of paint a picture of success here at Exeter. And I have to say, Mike Chapina is totally correct. I mean, I think the reputation of our of our athletic program and the success that we've had. There's just so much of it that revolves around all the work that you put into it. And so as a board, I know we're very appreciative of the work that you do. Thank you very much. And and I, you know, I have to say, I could not do this without the wonderful staff that I have. So I have to thank all them as well, too. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on into the to the next presentation. This will be a presentation by Mrs. Guidish, our Director of Finance, and she'll be reviewing our 2020 21 final general fund budget and providing us an update. Yeah.
Okay, I'm waiting for the disabled screen to be enabled, Joe.
It should be good now.
It says host disabled participant screen.
Should be good.
Okay, thank you. We're in the final round of the budget process. At the last business function committee meeting, I did review some of these slides. I've added a couple more. But next week will be final adoption. First, begin by looking at the food service budget. I revised the projection were the loss for this year to about 127,000. It was close to 100,000 the last time we looked at it. But due to the program we were running, the summer program where we were giving meals to anyone between the ages of two and 18 and having to still pay wages and benefits, the loss is a little bit higher. And if you look the second line from the bottom, I revised and then assets to exclude PABO PAB being other post employee benefits. It's really an accounting entry to reflect the liability of benefits related to pension as well as as healthcare. So really our retained earnings at the beginning of the year 508,000, but after a loss, it'll be 381,000 thousand in that fund for 2021 projecting break even. And this also includes a price meal price increase of 10 cents for both breakfast and lunch. Adult prices will remain the same. Moving on to capital projects. This year we are expending approximately 2.5 million. As you all know, we added on the senior high track, but in addition completing a junior high chiller project, and we also had a senior high roof restored. So they were three major projects. The end of this year, the estimated fund balance, about 7.5 million. Heading into 2021, we will be expending 3.5 million on the Lorraine and Jacksonville ventilators. And we are keeping in funds for repair or replacement of playground equipment. And also district-wide, different buildings really need some carpet replacement. We're also adding the Owat and Cell Booster System that is on the agenda under facilities. So that will be discussed at that point, but the total is 3.6 million. So the end of next fiscal year, the capital project fund, and this is outside of general fund, will be down to 3.9 million. This slide summarizes where we started at the end of last fiscal year, June 30, 2019. The district had about close to 9.9 million in capital project funds. This year, 1920, we're spending 2.5. Next year, 3.6 million in our long-range plan for 21, 22, another 1.9 million, another million in 22, 23. So by the end that time period, there would be a million remaining in capital projects. We also have projects that need further review, 652,000. One of the large things in there is the weatherproofing of of buildings, but that needs to be evaluated. Then going out to 27, 28, another million. Now, if we were to want to maintain a balance and capital reserve as a best practice of 3 million, we really need to look at issuing new funds at some point. And 3.6 million at least, and that's before any capital project related to the transportation center. Possibly admin. This is one of the slides I had reviewed last week. The major points is K to 12 education has a 12-month budget at the state level. And also public school districts for their basic education subsidy and special education subsidy. We are, will receive the same funding we received this year. However, this final budget I reduced by 161,000 because the proposed final really included what the governor proposed to increase. And another major change is the federal funding to LEAs 670 million. This is the the state's overall budget for the Department of Education. So the federal funding that public school districts are receiving and also for this first component, the CARES Act, Esther Funding, there is a portion allocated to non-public. But the uses are really related to COVID-19 and you know, preparing for it and, you know, planning for to coordinate operations during long-term closures, having the technology needed. Also providing staff and students. Also providing staff and students with mental health services and supports. But it's important to emphasize that these are one-time funds and they're emergency aid, and that's their primary use is to address the additional costs we will incur to to really mitigate what, what is happening. So again, the second part of the federal funding is the the PCCD or the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Development. This really takes the place of the Act 44 grants that districts get over the past two years anyway, on an annual basis. And again, these funds are really directed towards what we need to open up schools again, you know, in fall and to prepare for it. So for Exeter, the plan is to utilize 629,000 in 2021, the balance of 110,000 in 21, 22. The ESSER grant is 355,000. The safety and security grant is 384,000. And these uses really are the optimal use of one-time emergency fund. It's about maintaining health and safety learning environment. Again, we will be using them for PP and E, cleaning supplies, furniture, et cetera, for social distancing and cleaning. And cross district-wide facilities, nurses and students, educational technology, Chromebooks, hotspots, contracted professional services, social workers, nurses, psychologists is needed to meet mental health and physical health needs. Software to provide instruction and assessment. Textbooks, additional resources that'll focus on early literacy to compensate for what was lost in instructional time. In addition, additional supplies, so there's limited sharing between students. The general fund revenue for 2021. The changes made since the proposed final that was adopted in May are reducing the subsidies based upon flat funding for 2021 for basic and special ed. And I'm adding in the federal CARES grant funding of 629,000. And also adjusting capital lease financing based upon what our final financing needs were. So a net change of 415,000. So the revenue before tax increase, 75,540,000 with a one and a half percent property tax increase, 76,229,000 or a one and a half percent increase adds about 690,000 in real estate tax revenue. So moving on to a summary of the general fund revenue. I wanted to point out for 1920, I have gone back and evaluated what's happening in other, in the local real estate, earned income tax, delinquent and interim, and I'm reducing our estimate revenue for this year by an additional 254,000. And really, it's because the VIT is distribution for May, which came in June, is 100,000 lower compared to May of last year. And that is primarily due to the extension of the filing deadline to July 15. The real impact of COVID-19 on closures and layoffs, we won't see that until the second quarter of 2020. And we'll receive that distribution in September. So we were going to have to watch that closely. And again, I, you know, evaluated the other sources like delinquent tax, and they are down from what I had estimated back in May. This table summarizes the impact on local revenue for this year. And as of 616, difference between what I anticipated in April to what it's looking like now is a difference in these items listed of about 371,000 less. So April's estimate was really pre-COVID. And I've shared this slide in a previous presentation and really summarizes the 2020, 2021. My initial estimates in reduction in local revenue in the first column, almost 1.6 million. On further review of information provided by Councilman Association of School Business Officials, which was reported in the Reading Eagle in May, I adjusted that number by an additional 615,000. So the impact to local revenue in 2021 is 2,175,000 less than had we not experienced this pandemic. Moving on to the expenditures, I evaluated the estimate for this year in expenses and I have reduced them by an additional 290,000. And that relates primarily to contracted services. Now we're in the middle of June and invoices show what the trend is. Utilities as well as repairs. But I think it's important to point out, even though due to the impact of COVID on expense of a reduction of about 1.4 million, that is far less than the reduction that we're going to see in local revenue for next year of 2175,000. So about 730,000 difference. So even though you hear people saying, well, your expenses must be down. Well, yes, but our local revenue next year is really, is taking a bigger hit. And at this point, until we know what school is going to look like next year, we don't know how that's going to impact on the expense side. The general fund expense for 2021, probably the biggest change since May is the health trust premium will remain flat, be the same as 1920. And the change, what we had in the post final was a 2% premium increase. So that difference is 157,000. But going from the original budget that we look back, you know, several months ago, with an eight and a half percent premium increase, really going with a 0% increase. You know, the impact on the budget on the healthcare is about 800,000. So that's, that's pretty significant to all school districts who are in the Berks Consortium. And some other minor changes throughout the budget were made, and I reviewed these last week. But again, pointing out that the ESSER and safety expenditures, this exact match that we have in revenue, we are putting in expense because we are directing them to these one-time needed expenditures. So the expense number for 2021 is 79,381,077 dollars. This chart really summarizes our expenses by major object. I reviewed the comments section last week. The variance columns, those in light green really are comparing pre-COVID to the final budget. And I'm doing that so that you are comparing a full year of operations to what we're hoping will be a full year of operations next year. And it really reflects what your year-to-year increase is. And that's in expense in total, 1,653,000 approximately or 2.1%. And if you look at the first two lines of wages and benefits, the year-to-year increase there reflects, that is where our costs are increasing primarily, you know, in wages and benefits. And our final budget numbers, as I mentioned earlier, do include the 629,000 in one-time emergency funding. So the summary of revenue, expense and fund balance. The columns, two columns to the far right reflect the the current millage of 33.1107 and then a one and a half percent millage increase. Again, as I said, would generate additional 690,000 in real estate tax revenue, which would leave us with a deficit of 3,152,000. The components of fund balance that we have, we have commitments. There'll be a slide on that later. We have assignments. These, these two are uses, future uses of, of fund balance. Then there's the unassigned fund balance, which is 5.7% of general fund expenditures. I added in a couple of slides which I shared back in April when I discussed the five-year projection, really to illustrate what happens in a scenario of no tax increase, where a deficit, deficit spending can use up your savings or the fund balance. In this scenario, we had not raised taxes at all. And it was assuming that state funding would remain similar to what we've seen over the past couple of years. And again, this was pre-COVID. And I have not adjusted these for COVID because at this point I don't know what it's really going to look like. So, and then assuming, you know, contractual wage and benefit increases, you can see how by 2024, 2025, the fund balance would be exhausted. This next slide that I shared previously, a 2% millage increase. Again, the deficit's not quite as high because you are injecting new tax revenue into your general revenue. But again, still not keeping up with the trend in expenditures. And primarily, if you look the salary and benefit cost line, that's where our increases will occur and continue to occur. In May, there was an article in PASBO's magazine, and it was about school districts and fund balances and stabilizing instruction for students. And it really was addressing the importance of having a fund balance. And I just listed some things that I think are important to understand. That number one, this COVID-19 pandemic, it's causing us to leverage fund balance. You know, we obviously are using, will be using over 3 million in fund balance. And at this point, we don't know how is it going to impact in 21, 22. Also, fund balances underpin or they support the local community's ability to mitigate financial shocks. You know, as, as we are undergoing right now, but also to keep the, you know, the school districts instructional programs going. The reserves, they serve to provide stability in student learning. And we need this more than ever now in order to rebuild some sense of student academic routine. Fund balance is one-time money and it only can be spent once. And once it's gone, then you subject your general fund to greater instability. School districts need to be planning for the next 24 to 30 months to weather current and expected fiscal impacts. Clearly, this is not a one budget and done event. Finally, committed and assigned fund balance is used for capital infusion for building needs, accrued benefit costs, such as pension rate increases, increased smoothing. And that's not likely to decrease now after this pandemic. And future projected spending and deficits. So basically, the, the point of that article, and important to emphasize that you need to have a fund balance in order to have stability of your, your first. Finally, the millage impact was highlighted in yellow of a 1.5% increase, raising it to 33.6073 for just about a half mil. For home assessed at 108,000, it'll be $53.79 more per year on a monthly basis for $1.48. Again, total revenue generated by one and a half percent, 690,000. On the agenda to be voted on next week are the fund balance commitments. They must be approved annually. And again, they address Peasars, the public school retirement system, our assessment, which, that may continue to be an issue and capital improvements. Property tax relief allocation, we did receive the full amount of 1,361, 1,361,000. There is about 6,800 homestead farmstead properties. They'll have their assessment reduced by 5,955. And based upon a millage, if we increase, the board approves an increase of one and a half percent, they'll receive a reduced tax bill of two, by $204. Next couple of slides really are agenda items. The leases that will be approved for Chromebooks and vehicles. And we'll review the insurance agenda. And one of the final items I wanted to mention is in regard to the legislation about tax payment. House Bill 2460 doesn't appear that it's going to be going anywhere. Senate Bill 201125, it did pass. But the House is not back in session until June 22nd to, to vote on it. But again, our final adoption is June 23rd. The Business Function Committee meeting, I made the point of, would it be in the interest of the board to extend the flat period by one month to November 30th? Which then make the penalty period only one month. Currently, our installment plan has, allows the third payment due by November 30th. So if taxpayers were interested in having that additional month, it's available to them through the installment plan. You know, at this point, you know, it's up to the board, but kind of need to wrap things up. I do know at least 10 other districts are keeping things as is, or they're extending their installment to November. But and again, if we extend the flat period, the collections in October, November are not that, you know, 2.7 million out of 45 million. So again, it's the board's choice, but because we're so late in June, it may be wise such to leave things as is. And finally, these are some things, you know, we have to consider, which I reviewed the Business Function Committee meeting. There still is a lot of uncertainty. You have to keep an eye on assessment appeals. They'll start appearing in August. We'll have to watch the Peasars employer contribution rate. And, you know, looking at, you know, how will the return to school or the reopening impact charter school costs with more students enroll in cyber. So a lot of unknowns at this point. Are there any questions?
And can I just ask you to go back to the previous slide quick, talking about the deadlines for tax payment and the potential extension of that? As I understand it, what you were saying is that we're currently waiting to see legislation that would allow us to extend the flat period. And that's, is that Senate Bill 1125 that passed the House or the Senate? I'm sorry.
Senate Bill 1125 did pass, and that bill allows districts to extend the discount period and or eliminate the penalty period. But in the discussion with PASBO and among other business officials, some of them don't believe that they need that bill to give them that flexibility. Some of them have already gone ahead and then they've done it. Their boards have adopted a change for one year only. So.
Well, you know, based on that, I, I would really like to see, maybe Ellis can prepare something for next week or something along those lines, but for us to extend the discount period, at least by that, not the discount period, I'm sorry, the flat collection period, by at least that one month into, I think you said it was November. not the discount period, I'm sorry, the flat collection period by at least that one month into, I think you said it was November. And, you know, I really think that anything that we can do, that's going to give people the flexibility to help them get through this type of year. I doubt that this is going to affect a whole lot of people. I certainly haven't seen it where I work at Brecknock Township. But, you know, I think we need to make every attempt that we can, and I think that this one is one that doesn't have really a substantial negative effect on the district. There's a potential that some people would pay a little bit more because of the penalty. But, you know, I think that's negligible in this situation, and I would really like to see that placed on the agenda for us to have it printed on the bill when those come out in early Jan- July.
To extend it to the thirtieth?
Yes, thirtieth of November.
Yeah, I did send him something and outlined these changes in the legislation or the inactivity. I didn't hear back from him. I'm sure I will.
Okay. Well, could we get, well, I I don't want to be the only person who speaks in up in support of this and then, you know, others are not comfortable with it next week. But could we get some type of indication from Ellis via email if if he believes that that's permissible as other districts have done and then have that on the agenda for next week?
Okay.
Or I guess it would be included in in the in the tax resolution.
Right.
Okay.
I have a sample.
Okay.
That's it.
So Anne, I I do have a question. And one of the things I think was even brought up in one of the committees last week was, well, Sunday, was about the PPEs and the equipment, having contracts to get the proper equipment. Has the state given any guidance on how we're going to be able to get enough? Because now we're going to be competing for PPEs with hospitals and other facilities and, you know, all of that. Is there any indication that they're going to try to maybe help us provide a good vendor for that or contracts? Because every school district is going to be open and they're going to need it along with all the hospitals and everywhere else.
The state hasn't given any guidance on that yet. As far as the Berks County Intermediate Unit and trying to do a bid. They're still working on that. The first reply I got regarding that is that they may not be able to pull it together for the beginning of the school year, but I asked for an update and they are really making an effort to reach out to other intermediate units to see what they're doing and how to come up with a solution on obtaining what is needed. But in the meantime, I have a lot of vendors that are reaching out to me via email and I'll be reaching out to them to find out shipment times, you know, availability of product and we're working on it.
To to that subject, have we been in contact with the township at all in terms of any supplies that they've been able to prioritize? Because they're first responders. I know that, you know, where I work at Brecknock Township, we've been able to coordinate with our fire company to try and order supplies. I'm not sure if that would be available to school districts, and I can certainly look into that based on what they're currently being provided by the Berks County Department of Emergency Services. But I think if there's any type of support that we could get from them or even any suggestions, because they are already going through the initial grant writing process. And it should be due soon, and they might be able to give us some guidance along those lines. I'm not, I'm not sure if any of those conversations have taken place at this point.
No, I have not reached out to the township, but that's a good idea.
Okay. Well, I think Mike, Mike and I had discussed looking to try and schedule something with the new township manager, who I understand started yesterday. So this might be a subject that we can raise with him, and I can certainly look into it at work. And and I'll get back to you on that to see if there's anything worth discussing, because it may not be an option that municipalities are able to share those types of supplies. So I'll follow up with you on that.
Anne, this is Dave. I just had a, just a real quick question about cyber charters. I I thought I noticed in your your comments there that they would not be increasing their tuition costs for next year, and that's not what I heard. Are you saying that they're they're going to, the rates are going to be flat from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one?
No, what I said, there are no legislative changes in charter school funding. The formula will continue. So.
And the other thing we, I guess we haven't really accounted for is what could could possibly be the loss of students to cyber charters this year in the event that families feel uncomfortable with whatever plans the school district develops, you know, for the return of kids to school. Do we, do we have any sense to, business managers have any sense of what potential increases they might see in in the loss to cyber charters?
We haven't discussed that yet, but the IU recently distributed a roadmap and it's an extensive checklist, which will be meeting on the twenty-fourth of January as a job-alike group in addition to facilities, food service. And I believe that may be one of the items on there under finances on to address. So there will be dialogue about it and trying to figure out how it might impact.
Yeah. And this is certainly an area where the legislature could provide some districts some relief, either by, you know, following up on Governor Wolf's suggestion that there be a standard tuition rate whereby having a modified rate based upon actual costs associated with special education costs for cybers.
Yeah, it's my understanding the House and Senate will be in session all summer long. So you know, that communicate, if we foresee these things happening, there has to be communication with them.
Yeah, I mean, we should, I mean, should we step up our advocacy if we think there's any chance that that has a possibility of being enacted? So. Any other questions for Mrs. Guidish relative to the the budget proposal? Anne, thanks very much. It's been a lot of work this year and you put an incredible amount of time and effort into this and virtually every board meeting you've had to go through, you know, this process of explanation. And I think we get better every time in terms of understanding it and getting a better and more thorough understanding. And I also want to thank the board for, you know, their attentiveness to this and and the recognition of just some of the, some of the major factors that are at play here. Very complicated.
Thanks, Anne.
So we're going to move again through our, through our workshop agenda. And again, just, we're just discussing things that'll be on the voting agenda for next Tuesday. Two sets of minutes will be subject to approval. There are also several policies that we'll be looking at under item six of the board agenda. You can see policies A through E reflect second reading, which have already been subject to discussion and and review by the board. We have several new new policies that are coming up now. These are we're at a stage right now in project, in policy development where we've gone through the entire policy manual, and now we're picking up on policies that have actually been updated since we've updated them recently. So if you look at some of these policies, for instance, policies one oh three, one oh three point one, one oh three point four. All three of those, at the very least, have been reviewed and approved by the board back in maybe two thousand and seventeen. But since then, in two thousand and eighteen, there have been some changes based upon PSBA review. So I'm good, I'm just going to touch on some of those a little bit. Policy one oh three has to do with the school and classroom practices for non-discrimination. And this is a policy where, you know, they've just added some language to the complaint procedure to address if a building principal, for instance, is a subject of a complaint. Also, some language in there informing the complainant of the investigation outcome and the corrective action taken. So these are some improvements to the, to the, to the policy, some clarifications to the policy. They've also changed the time for the complainant to submit a written appeal from thirty days to fifteen days. And that's in closer closer reflect the requirements of the Office of Civil Rights. The next one down, policy one oh three point one, this is qualified students with disabilities. These are the kids that we refer to as qualifying for five oh four, which these are handicapped or disabled students who don't require IEPs, but do require aid services and accommodations to be successful in regular education. So the only changes to this, this particular policy have to do with some obligations that the building principal would have to make it clear that even if a parent or guardian guardian doesn't consent to allow their child to participate in an investigation regarding non-discrimination, the district still has to investigate that claim. There's also also some clarifications regarding investigations and the investigation report. And and language that clarified that the outcome of investigation really means whether or not a complaint is founded or unfounded. And those are X language that we needed to add to this, this policy. One oh four, non-discrimination in terms of employment practices. Some language modifications to clarify that during an investigation, the accused and the complainant may suggest witnesses to provide evidence and some also, also some modifications to the investigative report itself again, so that the outcome clearly reflects whether it's a founded or unfounded complaint. One oh five, this is basically minor revisions made to update the terminology, the terminology for language instruction. Educational programs and English language learners. Policy one oh eight, adoption of textbooks. Here we've removed the specific timeframe for the approval of textbooks and kind of adopted some practices for the review, the evaluation, recommendation and adoption of digital textbooks. Policy one thirty-eight, which is language instruction, educational programs for English language learners or English learners. This is the old ESL. The terminology has been modified over the years and they're modifying it again. The former term we used to use was limited English proficiency, LEP. That's now being replaced by the term language instruction, educational program. And the term English language learner now has been replaced by the term English learner. So these are just some, it's some, some changes that are based upon the best practice for programs for students who have English as a second language. I think there's a final policy there that we're going to, we're making some minor modifications to. And that's the two oh one admission of to students, admission of students. And and this modification has to do primarily with the fact that this year specifically, we may not be prepared to accept students as early admission students to school. This policy normally, under normal conditions, non-COVID conditions would allow families to request early admission for their students to school for kindergarten, for first grade, if they meet certain criteria as, as based on testing by a school psychologist. Because testing really isn't available right now to us in the same manner as it would be. The recommendation for this particular period of time is to not not conduct early admission testing. But it would only be affected for the, for the period of time that assessments are really not accessible. So that's, that's the nature of the change of that particular policy. And that was recommended by our People's Services Office. So that's the extent of the changes in policy. Again, several for second reading. And then the ones I just described were all first reading. They'll have an additional month of review before we take action on those. Are there any, any questions about any of those policies? Okay. So this time we'll move to business functions and I'll turn it over to Mr. Aaron.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. The Business Functions Committee will be approving many budget items, A through O. One thing I want to call out in specific here is a resolution provided to us, I think by PSBA. Basically, a resolution that would be passed and sent to the General Assembly requesting that at minimum that the Assembly would provide flat funding for the districts for the entire fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. I think that there's also a request in there that they waive, didn't get the language exact. I want to go here. To provide cost savings to a school district through approval of a permanent mandate waiver program, which would enable districts to improve instructional programs or operate in a more effective and efficient manner. So that, that's going to be, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Hunter, you know, this, this was a an effort to really, again, help school districts save, save money in cost right now and expenses that are associated with expensive mandates that are not necessarily critical to the function of the school district, but but do add costs, you know, to to districts and 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 so it's a, it's, it's become, I think, a pretty popular resolution among school districts right now to request the General Assembly to to make some consideration there. And districts would have to apply for the waivers in different areas. It's not like they would be automatically provided. So we would have to identify those areas. They would have to be approved. And then would be potential cost savings associated with those reductions in mandates.
So we'll be considering that next week. In addition to that, I saw a question from one of the board members ahead of the meeting this evening on the per capita tax. And I was just wondering if our administrators can address the breakout of that tax between the township and the school district, which I really think was the the essence of that question.
The per capita tax, are you referring to email from Dr. Herring?
Yes.
Okay, the township is not assessing their five-dollar tax. And if that's on their website, I'll have to reach out to them. But I did confirm with Joe Star that they are not going to assess that five-dollar, the ten-dollar for the school district is made up of Act five eleven, five dollars pertains Act five eleven, and then section six seventy-nine of the school code, the other five dollars. Is that enactment? So it's ten dollars for the district.
Okay, thank you, Anne. And the the other big portion that we'll be approving is the budget as well as the tax resolution and also budgets for the smaller funds, including the Food Service Fund and the capital, sorry, the the general fund commitments. One, one thing that I just want to say before passing this off is I just would urge all the board members to support the budget. I know that we had disagreement about the direction forward. But this is a budget that the majority of the board approved, and I think the administration has worked very hard to achieve the goals that we laid out for them. And this year we were successful in, at the very least, slowing growth. And if you take out the funds that were expending for the coronavirus emergency, we are actually spending less money than we did last year. So without those one-time costs where we are now will allow us to work into the next year to really to really try and pair do do some strategic thinking about how our budget is constructed so that we're able to do more with less. And I think that's really going to be the focus of this next budget process. And I think this is an excellent starting point, and I just would urge all my colleagues to support the budget as we vote on it next week. Dave, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Hunter. We're going to move on to Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, hello. We have quite a few things on the Personnel Committee agenda for next week. We will be voting on retirements of our own, Mrs. Guidish from Director of Finance and also some of support staff. We will be voting on the resignations of our extra two extracurricular staffs, department chair chairpersons. The appointments of certificated staff, support staff, substitutes, support staff substitutes and extracurricular staff, including fall coaches and the junior high and senior high advisors. The a change of status for our some of our employees who will be moving from ten temporary professional status to teachers that are tenured within our district. And we will vote on leave. It kind of looks like addending, amending some leave of absences. We will be voting on the elimination of the elementary library aide position and the guidance counselor secretary position at Reifton. And also the reduction in work hours for our district aides. We will be voting on the extended school year staffing and also the extended contracts for some of our employees. We will also be voting on appointing Dr. Minor, our pandemic coordinator for our school district, and then also course requests and staff conferences. Any questions on any of those items?
Allison, real quick, I wanted to see. I'm trying to find it here to see if the senior high school advisor and coaches or all athletic advisors and coaches, if there is language reflecting pro rata payment if school is closed at some point next year. I I can't I can't seem to see that here. Okay, I found it. I found it. It's under it's it's at the bottom next to an asterisk for the fall coaches, junior high school advisors and senior high school advisors.
Okay.
Okay, so in in the motion that'll be there next meeting, will we have to reflect that specifically in the motion? Well, maybe that maybe that's a question for Alice. I'm not sure.
Alice will be in attendance at the meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, we can ask him then. Anything else?
Anything else for personnel?
I I it is my sense that we probably would have to vote separately on that motion because isn't that payment part of the CBA? We have a structure within the CBA, so we probably have to take an official action versus just approving it as part of the coaches. It would be my guess.
Okay.
I would, again, as Hunter says, I would check with Alice, but.
All right, make sure that we have that written out the way that we need to correctly say it.
In my room, you can watch TV.
Anything else with personnel? Okay, well, we're going to move on then to student functions. Thanks, Mrs. Wilson, and continue to enjoy your time.
Down at the beach, yeah.
Down at the beach. Thanks for thanks for taking the time to be here, by the way. That's that's really commendable. The next section is student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
Right, and I apologize. I kept bumping my mute as I'm trying to get my family to give me some space here, and I didn't mean to be doing that, so I apologize. So next week we will be voting under student functions on a settlement agreement and release. We're also going to be voting on several agreements. One is with Progressions Behavioral Health. Chancite of Pennsylvania, another agreement with Keppely Behavioral Accounts Consulting. Another one with Richard J. Karen Foundation and another with Stephanie Sharp and another with River Rock Academy. And then also a contract with River Rock Academy and wishing to read it. Lots of things in student functions next week.
Any questions? I know some of those, I think some of those have to do with ESY programs. Some of those have to do with some placeholders for alternative programs out of district programs for next year. Others have to do with specific services that we normally get each year, for instance, Karen Foundation, that provides us with, you know, our student assistance personnel on an annual basis. So this is the time of year to really pick up on a lot of those annual contracts as well as ESY, which will be coming up shortly. Any questions? For Mrs. Stratton, for the student functions. Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. We're going to move on to Athletic Committee, Mr. Japina.
Mike, you're on mute. Sorry, I'm going to pitch it over to Tom Legath to go over the startup plan. If Tom's not on mute.
Yep, I think I'm here, right?
There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Okay, so going over the plan, which we did last night as well at the Athletic Committee meeting. There's an in first and foremost, and and I stated this last night, the 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 major thing we're looking at here is is the health and safety of our students and our coaches. That's the number one concern. So in in working through this plan, that was always in the back of my mind and everyone that I was working with to get this plan together. So I want to state that first. So you have an introduction to COVID, a summary of that in terms of what you can and can't do in terms of when your yellow phase, your green phase, how many people are involved. One thing that a major thing here that is that Dr. Minor is the primary point of contact and she will answer and communicate with the state on everything. And what that means is she's just our school district contact person. Going down through the plan, and again, I'm just going to be very brief with this. It it specifies classifications of sports and what they are, high, moderate and low at all points, even if you're high or moderate, a sport can come to a low risk, minimizing the different things that you do. We I have levels of where we're at in participation with the phases, red, yellow is the second phase, which we're in currently. Hopefully soon we go to level three, which is green. And then there's a fourth phase with that if we continue to move forward. The guiding principles with the junior high and high school is we have a we're going to have a protocol and we are going to have a chart that you'll see later in this in this document. And there the coaches will be taking the temperatures of of every kid every day and charting them. Everything is confidential with each person's temperature. No one will be no one will see that. The coaches will keep that away. So so that would make make sure that would be confidential. The basic hygiene things, and I'm sorry, my eyesight's not good. I can barely see this. The the basic hygiene part of this and close contact is just thank you, is just the normal procedures that you're supposed to do, washing your hands for twenty seconds. Don't shake hands when you're sick, stay home. Down to the cleaning and sanitation at the bottom of if we were to use any of those things or touch any of those, everything would be disinfected. Working with the facilities custodial department on after workouts, different areas of where we're working out, depending on where it is, will be cleaned and sanitized and ready for the next day. We have just informational items here on on paperwork with physicals and Commonwealth Orthopedics in Exeter is going to be offering physicals at their site, which was very nice of them to be offering that. And there's a signup genius link there for all parents. This is for not only fall, when you need a physical, not only fall athletes, but winter and spring athletes can get a physical here in the fall. Again, twenty dollars and you would go to Commonwealth on Fair Lane Road. And the information, again, if this is approved next Tuesday, this will be on our website for everybody, everybody to view. Working the way down to disinfectant sanitization, kind of went over those things with maybe making sure everything sanitized. Athletes, coaches, check in for teachers. First and foremost, again, if some if a coach or a student does not feel well, they should stay home. They should not even come. They stay home. If they're exhibiting one of the some of these signs here, they should stay home. That's the that's the because these these work workouts are all voluntary. Come August ninth, or I'm sorry, August tenth, when this goes under the PIA jurisdiction, there's probably going to be another set of guidelines to follow. But right now, these are voluntary workouts that would start July first. Working down to what I talked about before about the coaches taking the temperature checks and with every sport, you have different entry and exiting points, and that will be contingent on what sport is where, and I will work with with every team and coach on that. Moving down to workout groups, one of the one of the things is you have ten kids in a group. Those ten kids stay with each other every single day for days on end. We do not, you're not going to mix groups up. Weight room, again, things will be sanitized all the time. At the end of a workout, the custodial staff will be cleaning and sanitizing the weight room. Going down to page eight with positive tests, if if that were to occur. Hopefully it does not, but that we immediately contact Department of Health and we will go and and follow their guidelines as to how we should handle things in the next steps to come. And then the last page on page nine, page nine here, the chart, this is what I talked about earlier with with charting from every coach that of every workout that we have. Student puts name at the top, coach's name, and then we have laser temperature thermometers that they will take their temperature. Ask them if they're having any symptoms, which you can see there on the chart. But again, at the top of that, if you see there in bold, it says each student chart will be kept confidential and not viewed by anyone else. So that's again, a very big piece is that this is all going to be, this is going to be confidential. What this is is just more information on COVID nineteen, and as we scroll down, you have some information from the Department of Health. And then you have some website links about obtaining more information at at what you would like to, if you would like to see any more information. That's just a really quick synopsis of this plan. And I know the school board has has seen this. And that's what they would be voting on next Tuesday.
So, Tom, I think there are some questions that Mr. Way has from a member of the public, but I would just like to say or to reinforce that critical to the success of this is compliance. It is following the rules. It's coaches making sure that the rules are followed. It's the athletes making sure you know, that they're doing everything that they need to do. It's going to take one instance of COVID and there will be no false sports. So this is a this is a real high bar that we're going to have to be able to get over every day in order for us to really have our athletics program. So I know there are some questions out there that might supplement the draft that you presented, and I appreciate the questions coming in from the public because this was just a draft that we were looking to have discussion on with other representatives of the community before we took a vote on it next week.
Miss Mr. Way, could I just ask that? I don't know how many questions there are, but after each question, could I answer that, please?
Absolutely. I will read the opening. I'll read the first question, wait for you to answer, and then move on. How's that sound?
That that sounds great. And just so everybody knows, I'm going to answer these questions to the best of my ability right now of what I know. And if there's something that I don't know, I will then go seek that answer and communicate with my colleagues to get to get the answer.
All right, so here here we go. Commendable efforts to miss by Mr. Legath, our athletic director, in piecing together a foundation for reentry plan for the district's inter-scholastic athletics in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. However, I believe there are some shortcomings with the guidance document and or protocols, at least in this draft. Please provide insight on the following. First question. Who is the designated pandemic safety officer official at an athletic workout, practice and or athletic event? If this is the superintendent, are they planning on being at each workout, practice and or athletic event? Or should the default be the head the default to the head coach or designate during the apps during their absence?
The the primary point of contact for our school district is the superintendent, like I I kind of stated earlier. She will communicate with the state and everything will go through her. As per a workout, the head coach or designate assistant coach would be the person in charge of that workout per that sport.
Describe how confidentiality shall be handled on those individuals, student or coach that may either feel ill or be symptomatic, whether it occur either pre or during an athletic workout, practice and or athletic event.
If this happens pre, they should stay home. They should not even come to a workout. If this happens during a work during a workout, this is handled just like it would be if if a student is sick and goes to the nurse. All confidential confidentiality will be followed. The nurse will, I mean, just like the nurse would do, they would call the parent at home. No one would know of what what is going on. So I would have to say that's because it's going to be handled like it would be at school and and they would go to the nurse's office.
What actions shall be taken if a student and or coach feels ill and or displays symptoms during a workout, practice and or said athletic event? What is the extent of the contact tracing that shall be involved? Will the team's sport be suspended for a period of fourteen days or canceled entirely depending depending the coaches, students involved and roster size of said team?
If a coach becomes ill, it it's just like anything else. Typically, there is another coach there. They would go home and will report to to myself. I would go report to Dr. Minor, and then I would go to the Department of Health. Anything else that happens with if something were to occur in terms of someone would get COVID, we would, we would go to the Department of Health to get guidance as to what our next steps are.
What steps shall be taken in the instance? Should a student and or coach feel ill and become symptomatic during a workout practice? Is it the question I just read? No, no, hold on. And or said athletic event afterwards, is there going to be a deep, clean, thorough sanitizing and disinfecting of facilities, gyms, weight room, locker room, athletic offices, training offices, field facilities to minimize further risk to others? This typically isn't cheap, usually requires deploying a response team to spray sanitize disinfectant fog, deploying the atomizers, et cetera, of an affected area.
We will follow the CDC guidelines when it comes to cleaning and disinfecting. And like I mentioned earlier, this custodial staff will be cleaning the facility after every clean. So in terms of if this were to occur, CDC guidelines will be followed as to how we should clean it.
Does the school district have the associated health? Does the school district have the associated health and liability insurance for COVID-19? Should there be individuals, students and staff contract said virus worst case scenario?
To my knowledge, uh, there's no liability for COVID-19, uh, but I would ask, I would kind of. Refer to our business manager, Mrs. Guidish as to if, if she would know if there's any liability for that.
Tom, do we, do our, sorry, do our athletes sign a waiver?
They will be, yes.
Okay. So I, I would probably, uh, ask our legal counsel to look at that waiver. This is a. This is sort of a, uh, an unusual circumstance. But we might want to consider adding something into a waiver.
What types of leaves are athletic staff and or coaches entitled to under the COVID-19? Should they be symptomatic? Shouldn't this also be outlined in the policy or at least refer to HR COVID-19 leave ESD policy?
So leaves, uh, of COVID-19, from my understanding, the gen, the, the federal government passed, uh, that they would be entitled to. And our human resource department is very well, what, very well versed in that, and they will be guiding that. Individual through that if this occurs.
Please outline the requirements for when coaches and or student athletes shall be required. To don facial covering masks and. What are those expectations? Medical exemption due to respiratory issues, individuals eating, drinking. Individuals being isolated from each other, greater than six feet outdoors, ample ventilation, et cetera.
At all times, coaches will be wearing masks or face shields. From my understanding, there's never eating during a workout, so we don't have to worry about any, anyone eating. Water bottles will not be shared. Every, every student athlete is, is asked to bring their own water bottle. And six feet social distancing will be, um, done at, at every workout and every sport.
Separately, what is the likelihood of how social distancing shall be able to be maintained during football practice and or said athletic event? This would include sideline for players on the bench, players on the line of scrimmage, maintaining splits with offensive linemen. Is it anticipated that they will wear masks in close contact less than six feet distance?
So at this point, you, you know, our, our sports teams are coming back and. Working on conditioning and skill training. I anticipate and I hope. As we move along here and we move to the green phase, that we'll get more guidance. To follow, um, students do not have to wear masks, but coaches will not be, will not come within six feet of. Uh, an athlete. Um, again, as the summer progresses and we move from yellow to green precaution will change and, and hopefully there'll be a revised guidance. For the positive.
Thank you for your consideration, cooperation and efforts. That's the end of the question.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, Joe, could you say again, who, who submitted those questions?
That was submitted by Richard Stanley, 4911 Dunham Drive.
Thank you. No other questions? Mr. Japina, back to you.
Okay, uh, my second item on the agenda has to do with the. Partnership for, uh, water polo with the, uh, why missing school district. That was, uh, first year last year, uh, a highly successful relationship with them. I do believe they, uh, pay us a fee for, uh. Participation. And again, this is all presumptive on the fact that we're going to, you know, have fall sports. But that's pretty much it.
Any questions for? Mr. Japina or in regard to any items on the athletic agenda?
We do have one more item, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the final item, um, had to do with our sports medicine services agreement and this. Took a sense of urgency this morning, um, when, uh, Tower Health announced that it was. Getting out of the sports medicine business, or at least that's how it was positioned in the media. We have a longstanding relationship with Commonwealth Orthopedics, the Exeter School District. Your sports medicine program operates under physician orders and that physician being Commonwealth Orthopedics. So we thought it was important, um, particularly in light of going into this season. Um, with all the requirements around COVID that we, um, get back into an agreement, re-up the agreement so that. We have a physician giving us, uh. Orders and, and just so you know, the physician is Dr. Paul Mar. Who is, um, not an orthopedic surgeon, he's actually a family doctor. With a specialty in orthopedic. So what's kind of cool about that is that. He brings a lot of these other, uh, uh, primary care components. Uh, to the table as well, in addition to his advanced orthopedics training. And I think that's, that's going to be really critical to us as we get into. Implementing a lot of the COVID, uh, components for the fall sports. And that's it.
Mike had a question about that. Um, is the authorization of a, um. Uh, of a, uh, sports medicine agreement, uh, the same as authorizing a school physician?
No.
I mean, are these two separate? Actions that we take on our part?
They are. They're two separate things.
All right. What, what is this? I mean, and I know you don't have this answer, Mike, but I'm just wondering what are. What, what is the status or current status of our school physician and? And when, when and how often do we approve that individual?
That I don't know.
I'm just wondering if any administrator can respond to that.
That's done yearly. I'm not quite sure when we're due to re-up that, but that's, it's done yearly.
Annually, okay. So we can expect to see that at some point. I just, I haven't recalled, I don't recall seeing it in a while and I just, I. I just wanted to, uh, get a sense that that was integrated into this proposal. Uh, Mike, thank you for that, uh, that report.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to curriculum programs, uh, Dr. McLendon.
Okay, so, um. Next week, we're going to be voting on this memorandum of understanding between the Berks County Intermediate Unit. And the Exeter Township School District to coordinate the efforts between the BCI's, BCIU's. Head Start Program and Exeter's title programs. And there is an attachment in there that, you know, explains why that is necessary and what the, um. There's five things listed that the school district will have to do. To satisfy the requirements from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act.
And this is, uh, this is a memorandum that we, uh, I think accept annually. My, my understanding.
As far as I know.
Correct.
Okay.
Dr. Phillips said, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. Dr. Winter said it, but you know.
Winners, okay, sorry. You're in a dark, Dr. Phillips. Uh, Mike, Mike, Mike is getting dark out there.
My dog's with me, my dog's with me, so I'm safe.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. We're going to move on to facilities.
Oh, sure.
Could I, could I, sorry, I, it was about something unrelated, but I wanted to see if there was any update for the board on the memorandum of understanding with. The Teachers Association regarding virtual programs.
That would be Dr. Winters.
There's nothing at this time.
Yeah, yeah, no new update, Mr. Earns.
All right, thank you.
So we'll move on to facilities committee, uh, Mr. Fidler.
Okay, uh, we already covered the, uh, first item, the, uh, addendum. And I can assure you that it will take me no longer than 45 minutes to do these other two. And then you can all go home. Let, I don't see Rob, Rob Ruzui, are you on the call? All right, that would be the items, item B. And, uh, I do not have the details on that, but I will be sure to do one of two things. I will either get the details for next week.
I am here.
Oh, Rob. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you on the list. Could you, uh, take just a few minutes and go over the, uh, go over item B, the systems design engineering proposal?
Yes, uh, while doing work in the, um, mechanical room in the senior high school. My, uh, HVAC technician along with a contractor. Discovered an issue with the boiler breaching in the senior high school. That is the exhaust ductwork. Uh, that feeds the exhaust from both the hot water heater and the boiler, uh, out of the building. Apparently, uh, when that was installed, it, uh, regular sheet metal was used, not galvanized. So now we're at a point where it's, uh, rusted to the point where you can put your finger through it. So, uh, that needs to be completely replaced. Uh, that project is going to be, uh, uh, need to be bid out because it's going to exceed our bid threshold. So these, this proposals for the specifications and the, uh, bidding for that project.
Got it. Uh, what, what is the bid threshold, Rob? Just so we have an idea at this point.
Oof, you got me on the spot there and could probably give you the exact number, but I believe it's, uh.
I'm sorry, Anne.
Around 21,000.
Okay, all right, thanks. So this, that's what we'll be voting. So we'll be voting on what, Rob, to authorize the bidding process?
And the creation of the specifications, correct.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you. And then the, um, the final item, item C, the KIT network. Protocol. Joe, uh, Joe Way, would you mind taking a few minutes to, uh. Bring us up to speed on that?
Not at all. The, um, what, what will be on the agenda next week is a proposal to, um, add a cellular booster. Internally, Watten Creek Elementary School. What the intended goal of this would be to, um, connect to external antennas. Um, external cellular antennas and. Hold on just a second. Um, anyway, to, um, uh, bring in antenna from, from cellular towers that are near the school. Uh, and boosting it inside the building. Uh, there will be an array of about 60 antennas throughout the school. Um, each classroom, common areas, uh, and the, again, the goal is to bring in, uh, cellular, um, phone service. Um, for emergency purposes. Um, so, uh, that will be, uh. We've talked about it for a couple of years. It is a Wilson, um, electronics amplifier. Uh, and Kit is a local vendor that we've been dealing with for a long time, uh, will be installing it and supporting it.
Great. Thanks, Joe. And just to kind of put a cap on it. The, the situation right now was brought to our attention by, um, Dr. Haller and, um. Pretty much you, you can't make or receive cell phone calls in, in so many locations inside of Watten. Um, that it really becomes or has become a, a safety concern. So we think this is. We think this is very important. The final, uh, cost. Joe, something like, was it 65,000?
69. I want to say sixty ninth and I don't know the details exactly.
Okay, 69, I, okay, I knew it was in the sixties. Yeah, and that's fine. So that's, uh, those are the two, uh, plus the A M are the items on the, uh. Agenda for next week for board vote. Uh, any questions? Okay, Dave, I did that under, in under 45.
Nice job, John. Uh, before we adjourn, I just want to say there will be an executive session. Uh, of just board members following the adjournment of the meeting this evening. Are there any board members who would, um, like to be heard at this time?
Yes, I would. Okay.
Go right ahead. Yeah.
All right. So, um. As you know, we, uh, started a, an, um. Equity group. It's informal and what we would like to do is make it a formal group. So that is going to be on the, uh, voting agenda next month. Um, I can tell you a little bit about what we're doing now, but what I'd like to do. And Hury will probably help me is to do a presentation so that we can tell you more about where the group is at. You know, what we're doing, where we're going or our goals are, that kind of thing. We, we're right now, Hury's in charge of, you're, you know, all these things already, right? Here anymore, but, uh, we're looking at what kind of group. You know, we can formally make this. And here he's looking at policy and talking to PSBA so that we're, you know, within their guidelines of what this group can be. So that's why, you know, we don't. We're not quite ready yet and we have our next meeting on July 6th. And so we're going to discuss. We've discussed in our group a little bit, but we need, we need to do a little research on it. And we are going to, you know, come to some sort of consensus at our next meeting on the 6th. And I, I really want to thank, uh, we're stuck in the dark. He's over there in the dark. Doctor, I really want to thank Dr. Phillips. Because Dr. Phillips is the one who got this group started. He saw a need for it. Uh, and did things to get to bring people on board with it. Uh, I know that, uh. There's initiatives, I'm not sure if you're familiar with initiatives from Secretary of Education Pedro Rivera. On diversity and inclusion. And, uh, so there's a lot of things that, that coming from the state that they want school districts to be doing. And I think that, um, I know like Dr. Phillips, he brought, uh, we had a speaker. The, for the staff, an opening day, beginning of the school year. I know, uh, Dr. Hamburg or you were there and, you know, some other board members were there. And the teacher, the staff and teachers had, um, professional development. Diversity throughout the year. So anyway, I'd like to, we'd like to bring that to the, uh, board. July, the July, uh, 21st. Voting meeting to make it an official formal group. This, and I, and can I, do you want me to, please, a few, a short presentation next Tuesday or wait until July 21st at the voting meeting?
The voting meeting is. Oh, is, is that, yeah, okay. Yeah, I would say at the, at the voting meeting.
Okay, not next week then, uh. 21st of July. Cause we don't have the vote, we don't have a wo, a workshop meeting in July.
Right. Right. I would say too, um, we do have a policy 905, I believe it is. It's called citizen advisory committees. And I would, I would really, um, I, I would suggest you take a look at that because I think that's an excellent. Policy. It's a, it's a new policy. But I think it provides a good framework that, that this organization may be able to kind of fall within. You know, it doesn't really fall into an ad hoc committee or a standing committee kind of format. But it really does, I think, lend itself to a citizens advisory. In a committee format, if you read through that policy, it would require some board action. In order to do that, but I would just suggest taking a look at that and in preparation for your statements.
Right, but, but, uh, that's why we're trying to figure out what this group can be because, uh. I don't think it really falls into a citizens advisory group. Because we're are more of a, uh, task force. You know, we're, we're an action group. And from what I know about citizens advisor, and we actually have one already, uh. The one that used to be called over the fence. And what I know about that, it's more, that's more like communication, like two-way communication. You know, what the community brings concerns and to administration and. That's my understanding of that, uh, type of, of group. So. I don't know that that, when, I think once I talk, once we talked a little bit more about what we're doing in our group, I don't see where that really. Fits into that, um.
I, I would just, I would suggest reviewing the policy, you know, reading it through. Um, if it doesn't apply, then we'll have to, we'll have to give that some.
That's why I was looking to see there, what are the options, you know, to have a group?
Yeah, I think that should be, I think that should be considered as one of our first options because it exists in policy as a, as a legitimate option. For citizens groups to be, and it always requires a board member present. I believe an administrator needs to be, you know, part of it, and then people can be selected and be part of that ongoing. part of that ongoing discussion, and it can be ongoing, minutes are maintained. It functions very much like a committee. And it can run indefinitely, but
But we're not, we are not just a discussion group, we're an action group, and so that's why we're looking to see, you know, what else can we be, you know, as a formal group? Does anybody else want to, Hury or Anne comes to the meetings and Hunter?
Well, I go ahead, Hunter, sorry.
I just think that this, especially as this moves to more of a board action group, I think it really could be an ad hoc committee. You know, I think there are some challenges with how our policy currently exists with the number of contributors that have been there for, for the task force thus far. But I think as we move forward to really looking to execute on some of the recommendations on, of that group, that it could very well fit better into an ad hoc committee of board members, whether that be two or three board members, or even four board members. You know, I think that there's no restriction against some of the people who have been regulars to our group thus far, so that they could still contribute, but it would really be a board-driven process as we seek to, I think, discuss some of the things around an equity audit, which is one of the things that I think is the next step. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, Sharon. But even as we move forward to examining our policies and making sure that we're addressing some of those areas that have historically been areas where school districts lack, I think, around the Commonwealth. If there's anything I missed with that, Sharon, or Hury, please correct me.
Yeah, and I think I was asking, because Dr. Hamburg was saying about the citizens advisory, so I was asking if you had a, you know, thought about that, but we really plan to dig deeper into it and, and, you know, see what we can come up with at our July 6th meeting.
If I could just jump in, and again, I haven't attended any of the meetings yet, and I'd like to make sure that we're all notified when we do have those meetings. But I do think
What did you say?
Like to be note, you know, aware, and I'm sure I missed it when I was tied up in COVID on some of the original meetings. But what I'm, what I was saying, Sharon, is that I do think, I think we do have to have a more formal approach to this because we're talking, we're going to have to address issues that are systemic in nature. And I don't think a community advisory group is a critical component of that, but I agree that it has to be driven at more of a board level if we're looking at systemic issues.
And we are, and I think that COVID-19, you know, I think you probably can all agree that it has really brought to the forefront some of our, you know, concerns around equity. And so, you know, it's a statewide initiative, it's needed, our demographics are changing. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's definitely something that's needed. It's just a question of, you know, what, how we can, what kind of group we can be. So we, we I'm not sure, that's what we're trying to find out.
What kind of, what kind of direction are you getting? I know we, I know you're working with a consultant from PSBA.
Yes.
I forget her name, Dr.
Dr. Heather Bennett. So we did, yes, we get her involved because that's also, PSBA has done a lot of work. They actually started Department of Equity, three years, Dr. Bennett is the director of that, and she's in her third year. So they've actually, they have a lot of resources and a lot of information. She's been attending the meetings and helping us out.
And I'm going to say this, we do have a lot of, we did put together some initiatives that we want to have in place. You know, in particular, we're trying to see if we can try to enhance some of the diversity in the school district, which I think is very important. Maybe even have some advisory on diversity, even in some of our curriculum. Also doing like some, some testing of some of our employees and, you know, basically staff on whether they have some, you know, some inherent bias of some sorts and things like that. So I thought that was some of the real initiatives that I think we need to do, you know, for the future, because yes, there is diversity, it's, it's, it's starting to grow, and I think it's vital. I think it's very important for us to have all those areas.
It's not, we actually started calling ourselves a diversity group, and really what we're finding out is it's more about equity and looking at everything that you do in your school district through a, an equity lens, everything. And so but, and Mike, you had said about the meetings, but what, one of the things that we found out is that it's, you cannot have more than four board members at any one meeting.
Okay. So I mean, if
We could kick Hunter out and then you could come in.
Yeah, okay, yeah, Hunter goes to all the meetings anyway. But I, I think actually what would be important is to ensure that we're getting, you know, good minutes developed and that we have, where we're, you know, sharing information, you know, and I, I mean, I think the work that you guys have done so far, I mean, I don't know why we have to wait till July 21st. I mean, why don't we do something on, you know, next week?
Yeah, I guess that we, we could, I guess, but what the thing is, I'm not comfortable with making it a citizens advisory group. I don't know how everybody else feels. I know a few other people were not comfortable with that either. But I don't know how the whole group feels, but I do not think that that encompasses what our group is doing. Because we are an action group. We want to affect change in the district.
Yeah, I think that's, so we may need a little bit of time to try to figure out what our options are. And take, take a look at, you know, the broader level of the policy. And I know what's happening here is not necessarily happening in isolation. It's going to happen in all, in many districts throughout, you know, Pennsylvania and through the country. So I'm hoping that Dr. Bennett maybe has some suggestions. I know PSBA has a toolkit, you know, that they actually, you know, provide to school districts and that she's able to kind of come out and provide in-person, you know, presentation. So it would be great, actually, to see.
He does do that. I mean, and we talked about that, she went over that at one of our meetings. There is, she's, what she's doing for us now, we're not paying for any of that, and she's, you know, comes to our meeting, she does a lot of help. I talk to her, you know, outside of the meetings. The trainings that she, they, she does, they do come with a small, teeny cost, Hunter. So like a couple hundred dollars, but it could be, and because it would be Zoom, it's even, you know, it's less than what the, the price is when she does it in person. So, and then she comes out, she'll train the whole board, she'll train our team. So we could do that as well, but that, yeah, that is the reason why I, I thought we could put it on to the agenda for July 21st meeting for voting, to give us some time to figure, figure this out.
I think it also gives a chance for Dr. Minor to get on board and to actually have some involvement, more engagement too. I believe she's been attending your meetings, if I'm not mistaken.
She has, yes. So I mean, if anybody on the board has, you know, ideas, or we're going to talk to our group, and, you know, hopefully we can come up with, you know, what would be the best thing. And we're actually, there's not that many districts, there's five districts in Pennsylvania that actually have a, an equity policy. But there's, I don't even think those five have done all of the work. There's a lot of work you have to do. Heather said you may spend like a whole year, you know, doing the work to make a policy meaningful. And, you know, so we're actually on the forefront, out on the forefront of that, but it is something that all districts, you know, you know, are going to need, going to need to do. So we're actually ahead of, ahead of it.
Sharon, thanks for your work and your leadership on that and all the other board members who participated. We'll look forward to
And like I said, Dr. Phillips, because he actually got this going. This was his idea, and he got the whole group started, and so I do thank, thank you, Dr. Phillips, for that.
So before we adjourn, I understand you have two additional comments before we close. And Joe Way, could you, these are community comments?
These are our community comments, yes.
Yeah, could you go ahead and go with this?
Sure, my first comment comes from Barbara Rocco, an instructional aide at a Wharton Creek. It says, "The savings of $105,000 for the reduction of eight hours that are being recommended is 0.133% of the total $79 million 2021 budget. Is it really worth that infinitesimal savings, a reduction of 0.133% of a $79 million budget? I think priorities are out of order."
Okay, thank you.
The last question comes from Nicole Howar, who is a parent at a Wharton Creek. "My name is Nicole Howar from 358 Constitution Avenue. I wanted to take a minute to say thank you for bringing the cell phone reception problem at a Wharton Creek to light. It's a huge safety issue, and I'm so thankful to Dr. Howar for helping to push this issue. I'm so happy to hear the Exeter is taking this safety issue seriously." And that is the last comment.
Thanks, Mr. Way. So again, I want to remind board members, we're going to have an executive session for personal matters immediately following this with just school board members. And unless there are any other comments at this point from board members, the meeting will be adjourned.